Hey, ¿qué pasa, Calexico? Welcome back to the podcast. Like always, before we begin, I want to thank my friends here at Calexico Brewing Company for allowing me to record today's episode here. I really, really appreciate it. Also, I want to thank my friend Jamie Schuh and her kids from Shoes From The Heart. I have her t-shirt today. I'm wearing her t-shirt today. So they're a nonprofit organization who, well, she has a lot of young kids, young artists that they paint and customize shoes for kids that are, that have disabilities or that are struggling, you know, they're living with disabilities or fighting like a serious disease. Like they'll, like say they like a character, they'll draw a character and paint it and give it to them. So yeah, it's Shoes From The Heart. Shoes, it's spelled C-H-E-W, and then from the heart, emphasis on art. They put the art in heart. But yeah, look them up on Instagram. Really, really cool things that they're doing. Hopefully, one of these days, I get to talk to some of the kids. And Jamie, I know she's really shy, but she needs to come on and promote her nonprofit. They're doing some amazing things. And I told her I was going to wear a shirt this week and promote her. Thank you, Jamie, for what you do and for what you're doing for the community. She's been a coach for a lot of us, you know, growing up here in Calexico. She works for the Calexico Recreation Department, and she's been doing it for, I don't know, like, I was like 10 when I started playing basketball, and I'm 40 now, so she's been doing it for a while.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, so, but going back to my guest today, I want to introduce candidate for Imperial City Council, Ms. Aida Oviedo Martinez. Thank you for coming down to Calexico and being here today.
Thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here. First time doing a podcast.
Before we get into, you know, campaigning and all this stuff, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
So again, I'm Aida Oviedo Martinez. I grew up in the city of Imperial all my life. I did go away for a little bit, but very little, and came back. I'm born and raised. My family grew up there, my mom and dad, their mom and dad. So I think, and now my kids, and so I'm happy to raise my family in the city of Imperial. I love it. And I'm happy to be able to give back, right? So that's one thing. We have six kids altogether, three dogs, one grandbaby. So we got a full house. But I really wanted to give back to my community. And one way I thought about doing that was by running for a city council.
And we were talking before the, you know, started recording. You're part of other organizations like MANA, you're part of the board for ARC.
ARC, uh-huh.
Can you tell us a little bit about, you know, some of the community, things that you've done, and not only for Imperial, but for the Imperial Valley?
Yeah, so MANA, as you know, is a Latina organization, we're a national organization. And my department, right now, I'm the community service director. So every quarter, or if we can, even sooner than that, we try to give back to the community in terms of something as simple as water bottles for the hydration stations. I think we gave over 1,200 bottles. Don't quote me on the number. During Christmas time, we gave back to our senior residents who are in the residential facilities. They got socks, they got beanies, they got a little like care package. We just did over 100 backpacks for back to school in combination with the ACE program. So we try to give back to our community a lot in addition to the women's leadership conferences and our young ladies conferences that we try to hold every year. If not, we alternate the years. So that's one item. And then I'm on the board for ARC of Imperial Valley. So as you know, they do a lot of great things and give opportunities to our abled, disabled, right? You don't want to call it that they're disabled. They're able-bodied people and clients, and they're out there working jobs. And you can see them at the Strike Zone, which is part of ARC, and also the Mozzarella's in Imperial amongst other recycling plants. So it's a really great organization that also provides employment for disabled clients. And then I'm also on Imperial Breakfast Rotary. So I've been a member about a year now, and I like the direction it's going. We are doing a lot more community service. We got to read to the kids the other day. We read dinosaur books, and then we had dinosaurs come out, and the kids were so excited, and some were scared, but that was okay. It was really fun to do.
And you said you lived in Imperial your whole life, and you went away a little bit. But, you know, why make the decision now to run for city council?
So I, as I mentioned, and I do community service, right? So I consider that like an extension of the amount of community service and being able to give back to the community. So there's things that, you know, I would like to see for my generation, for my kids' generation to have. I remember Imperial being this little tight-knit closeted community, and then we would call it going to town. You would have fields between us, between El Centro. So I want to see that growth in a positive manner. I also want to see more businesses come to Imperial. We have a lot of residents, and I want to be able to make sure that our kids have good schools in conjunction with the city council, you know, that we have great parks for them to be able to visit. Some are retention basins, yes, but we still need to do something with them. And then, you know, safety, it's, safety is a big issue. And we don't have our own personal fire station, or we don't even have a police station. It's kind of the old one of City Hall, if you've been to City Hall there, so.
You know what, I haven't, I mean, Imperial is, you know, it feels small, the main part of Imperial, right? You know, the, where the main street and all that. But Imperial has grown so much, you know, it's going over to the...
Dogwood, almost. And then you have, it goes past Walneckel, and then Worthington, it's almost hitting that way. And, yeah, it's really, I mean, the cutoff kind of is on Ayden, it seems like, because then we have Fields after that. But, yeah, we have, excuse me, Austin. Yeah, we have a lot of, it's growing.
Yeah, it's growing a lot. You know, for a time, you know, me and my wife, I talked about moving to Imperial, a family that lives in Imperial. And, you know, it seems that, you know, a lot of people are, you know, going, you know, in that area, you know, when new homes, because I think Imperial is one of the cities here in the valley that's still building new homes.
They are. From what I understand, they have 600 homes permitted to be built, like permitted already. So we have a lot of residential communities, right? And it's growing exponentially that way, but yet we don't have a lot of businesses who come.
And you mentioned, you know, having an old, small police station. You don't have a fire station per se.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't know that, you know, that's something that...
So Imperial is actually contracted with the Imperial County Fire Department, who provides our fire services. And then we have, of course, the EMS that helps us out. But yeah, we don't have our own fire department, and we're over 20,000 residents now.
Wow.
Yeah, and the police department, we took a tour this morning. I attended the Citizen Academy, and it's amazing. You see the old City Hall. It still has some of those old, what do you call it, holding cells? With the like metal cement bed in there, and, yeah, we need another City Hall and a police department.
Yeah, and, you know, it's weird, because like we say, you know, people know that, you know, Imperial is kind of like the city to go to. Especially, you know, when it comes to community, you know, involvement, there's a lot of community involvement. You guys have the Lights On Main Street, is what they call it?
Yeah, the parade of, we have the parade that comes up in December 9th, it's actually this year. And then we have Christmas in a small town, that's on the 10th. And then, you know, the market days are giant. We have so many people throughout the whole county that come out. And so that's a really good opportunity for the city itself to showcase our downtown businesses, right? They stay open. And right now, we have a couple lots down there that are just ripe, waiting for a business to come. So that's just fuel for the fire. You already have a built-in market. When market days comes out, people are exposed to what's down there. We just need those businesses to actually come and build there.
Yeah, and, you know, how do you, because, you know, being a part of the planning commission, I think that's what a lot of our small towns are, you know, striving for, like bringing in more businesses, more tax revenue.
Yeah.
How do you make sure that, because to me, you know, it's a no-brainer, because I live here in Imperial Valley, but how do you sell it to, you know, a big box chain? Or maybe like even somebody that's been planning to open a small business, maybe open it in Imperial, how do you sell that to?
So one of the things is that we, I mean, we have 20,000 residents now. So now we have some other, you know, chains. We have McDonald's now, if you didn't know. We have Starbucks there. So, you know, we're growing up a little. One of the other things too is that we are one of the safest cities in all of California, and especially the county itself. So I think residents want to come there. If we have businesses that come there too, that they can know that it's a tight-knit community who kind of watches out for each other, right? The other thing is, is we need to start, you know, I'm not privy to everything yet, but going after some of those bigger companies, if they have commerce markets or something like that, I can see, you know, our city officials going out there and saying, "Hey, this is what we have to offer. This is our demographic of our residents, right? We have high, medium incomes. We have professionals who live there." I think our median age of the residents is 33 years old now. So we have a young population who, yes, sometimes we shop online, but sometimes you want to go down the street, right, to get a pair of socks or go to the market, a local market there too.
And I feel that overall, like when, when I do make it that way, like towards, like the other day, my wife and I went to the deli that's on Ayden.
Oh, Brick House.
Yeah, we went, and overall, you know, that day, we saw a lot of kids coming from Imperial High. You know, some of the teachers, you could see them wearing their, you know, the school attire.
Yeah, down the street from IVC, yeah.
I feel like overall, you know, people from Imperial do shop local. They do support each other. And it's, you know, not that it matters, but I feel like, you know, you know, like the owners, you feel like...
You can talk to the owners, and you can totally, you have that relationship, like, "Hey, I saw your kids at the game," or, "Hey, I saw you here and there. How's your mom? How's your dad doing?" And so those who build local, you do want to support them. I mean, yeah, we're supporting McDonald's and Starbucks too now, right? You know, that's amazing. But it's nice knowing that if I go to either Brick House or I go to El Serape, or if I go to K-Sushi, like, I know the people there, and I know who's working there. So that's important.
Yeah, El Serape is one of our favorites too. We have the, I don't think it's called the Ray Special anymore. I think they call it like the special quesadilla or something.
Oh, yeah.
But before, it was the Ray Special.
Man, I used to eat those like crazy when I was in high school. That was it, just the whole quesadilla. We would go, we had open, what was it, open campus. Yeah, we would all go eat over there. Or we'd call in our orders at the teacher lettuce.
Yeah.
It was great.
And so Imperial, there's three spots open.
Yes.
There's six people running.
Correct.
So there's two people that are going to actually send the board. But overall, it would be kind of a new board, because I think there's only one incumbent, or?
So James is still the incumbent. Jeff Dill's not running again, and then Corinne's moving up to IAD. So yeah, it's just two who are sitting on there, Robert and Katie.
So it could be a, you know, a new...
It could be a whole brand-new board, essentially, you know, aside from the two that are already there. I think they're up for reelection next year. But yeah, that's exciting. I think, you know, people are scared of the word change, right? But it would be a change, yes, of board members.
Yeah, because, I mean, I mean, it would have to be, you know, the incumbent to win, and then two new boards that would, you know, actually keep it. In a way, that's the same, because, you know, it's the majority, that would be the majority.
Yeah.
But, you know, how do you think you would be like an asset to the board or to the city council or to the city?
A little bit about my background, besides, you know, I'm a mom and I give community stuff. I've been in healthcare for, ooh, I'm 43 now? Am I 43? I think I'm 43 now, since I was 19. So I've been in healthcare. I have just my background in schooling. I had my associates here from IVC in nursing, and then I went on to UOP, before there was a UOP actually here. We did everything online, and we would meet in the hotel, like conference rooms of places. I'm talking, I'm old. And I got a wild hair, and then I was like, "I'm going to go back to school." And so I went back for my masters and my doctorate at University of Arizona in Tucson. So I have a doctorate in nursing practice, and I've been a nurse for forever, it seems like, or working healthcare in some aspects. So it's always emergency, ICU, ER. And you learn to work as a team, right, that collaborative effort. It's not just a one-man show. No, everybody has to work together to, on that time, work on this patient and save them, or at this time, you know, for the city to work on these projects. So I'm not a politician, right? I don't have any political experience whatsoever. I think that's an asset though, because I bring a fresh set of eyes and ears and a different mindset to stuff. So, you know, this is my first time running, so it's exciting. But as an asset, I feel like I have those organizational leadership skills, those listening skills, right, that collaborative effort to work as a team with a goal in mind.
You work as a nurse, but is it like at the hospital, or?
So I work as a nurse practitioner for the last six years. I did internal medicine for a good while, and now I just switched to cardiology. So I work in the city of Imperial at a cardiologist office.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's not, it's not, it's like a 9 to 5 kind of thing?
Yeah, no, like 7:30 to a little bit later. You stay until the patients are done. But no, I love working with patients. You get to know them, you know their families, you know their struggles, you know, if, you know, it's sad to say, you know if they can afford this medication you're about to prescribe, you talk about it, right? You get to see how they're doing, and so it's a really rewarding and fulfilling job.
When you look at, you know, other city councils here in the valley, normally Imperial is kind of like the least...
They don't make a lot of noise.
Yeah, yeah. Do you think that, you know, coming in, you know, as a new board, if there's a shift in the board where there's three people, like, do you think that that would be the same plan, you know?
I think as a whole, if you grew up in Imperial, you're just a tight-knit community. You might fight with each other, right? But you're not going to tell that to the outside. I don't see that, and I'm not here to judge other boards, not at all. But Imperial's tight-knit. I feel like their board is tight-knit. At least I don't hear anything like you do from other boards, and so I can appreciate that, that they kind of watch out for the best interests of the city.
The city, yeah. Yeah, because I was talking to Tomas Oliva. And he mentioned that, you know, whenever you're asking for money for your city, you know, the lenders usually look at, you know, how your board acts between each other.
Correct, yeah. They look at it, and fortunately, you know, I'm learning that today for that Citizen Academy. I mean, I knew it, but I didn't know how much it made an impact that, because we have one of the highest median incomes. We don't qualify for a lot of grants. Yeah, our city needs money too, right? But we don't qualify for some of those other grants out there, because we have a high median income. And so if you're trying to build your, I don't know, new playground equipment at this park, you might not qualify for that grant. Or if you're trying to, in essence, build a police station or modify something, we might not necessarily at this moment qualify for some of those grants based off of, you know, it's a good thing. We have a lot of residents, we have good incomes, but it's a bad thing in the sense that, yeah, we don't get those monies, so I'm learning.
Yeah, and that's something that's really common here, like in Calexico, where, you know, your parents kind of, and it's an experience that I lived through. You know, my parents, you know, they weren't like, they were like in between like middle class and...
Yeah.
And because of that, like, we didn't qualify for a lot of things.
Exactly.
So it's like...
Yeah, I used to joke like, "Oh, I got a Ferrari in my brain because of my school loans, right?" Now I'm like, now it's a baby condo. And yeah, I'm never going to qualify for any of those repayment kind of things. My parents worked, you know. My mom was a correctional officer, and so until she got hurt on the job, and then she medically retired. My dad was in farming for a while when we were younger, and then he went on to Caltrans. And so if you're going to San Diego, he's the Jaime Oviedo that was killed on the job for Caltrans. So, you know, they had good jobs, but yeah, we didn't qualify for that stuff.
Yeah.
I'm like, I like free, free books. It just didn't happen.
Yeah, and it's, and like, like, living here, like, it was kind of hard, because a lot of people, especially because I grew up in the projects.
Okay.
My dad was a manager, and so we got to live on-site.
Yeah.
And a lot of my friends around me, like, qualified for a lot of, you know, grants and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and now I understand, you know, I feel...
Yeah, I mean, my parents didn't buy their first house. We lived in apartments, and we, they rented, I remember, and we lived in, you know, whatever we could get. When they bought their first house, it was like, I think I cried, because it was like the saddest-looking house on the block. They had to renovate it completely. I think there was holes in the walls at that time, and I was like, "You're buying this house?" You know, you're like 10, 11 years old. You don't, you don't get it. But that was their first house they bought. So, yeah, it was, it was, you know, you take pride in that home ownership, and it's a big deal there.
Yeah, they still, they still, yeah.
My mom, yeah, she still lives there. And then over time, she bought the house next door to her, and so now she has both. And so my brother and my mom, they live right by each other. It's nice.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's another thing that, you know, Imperial has, you know, the word like, some, you might have relatives around the corner.
Exactly. Back in the day, it would be like, you know, let's just say, Mr. Smith's house is over there. And you didn't know the street names, right? You just knew like, "Oh, it's so-and-so's house. You go over there and make a right," or "They live next to so-and-so," and that's how...
Gave directions.
Yeah, I mean, but now it's a lot different. I'm like, "You live where?" I'm like, "Oh, okay, that subdivision is this," and you can kind of figure it out by the names of, like, Sky Park has all kind of, it's like Airheart Court. They have different street names in regards to Sky kind of stuff. And then, you know, there's Sunset Ranch, and then there's these new divisions, and some of them I don't know yet. I got to look it up. At least they're street names.
Yeah, and it's really weird that, you know, because it's, it's, when you think about it, like Imperial has grown, like, was it like in the last 10, 12?
Last 10 years, probably eight to 10 years.
Yeah, it's been a huge, huge growth.
It has. I agree. We have one, two, three, you know, elementaries now. We have still one high school and one junior high, but...
But I heard that there's plans to kind of remodel the high school, right?
They are. That's a measure coming up that they want to, and I don't want to get the measure wrong. It's a measure. It's coming up in November, because there's also the City of Imperial's measure coming up, which is kind of a tax on the people who come to visit. So if you stay at a hotel, there's like a tax on that. Doesn't apply to the residents, just if you stay in the hotel. So I think that's a, I don't want people to get confused saying, "Our taxes are going up." No, it's just if you go stay in the hotel. It's like a commerce tax or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, I saw the plans for, you know, for Imperial High to get kind of like a facelift.
Yeah, that would be exciting. I'm excited for that.
Yeah, because Calexico has that, you know, they're still working on getting the high school, you know, a little facelift on it.
Yeah, yeah. I think all our schools, unless they've been built in the last five to 10 years, they all need some loving...
Yeah, I think the newest one is Southwest, and, you know, I mean, it still looks nice.
Yeah, but what is that, like, at least 12 years old, maybe more?
Ah, I want to say more, because...
You know what, it's more.
Yeah.
Because I remember going there for classes, for like a CNA class in my high school, and I graduated in 97, so that's a while.
Yeah, I graduated in 2000. I mean, I remember it was already there.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't realize how long it's been. Well, Imperial has Cross now, so they have that newer elementary. So that's exciting. It looks nice. And the kids, they seem like they're enjoying it. And T.L. Wagner still looks really, really good. But Ben Holt, yeah, I think it needs some love too.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, guys, sorry for the interruption, but I want to take this time and thank my sponsors. I want to thank my friends Camilo, Jake, Eric Ortega. I want to thank Eddie Lopez from Roots Creative, Ms. Norma Sierra Galindo, IID Director, representing Division 5 and serving the entire Imperial Valley. Will Torres from Valley Sports Network, your Imperial Valley source for sports. I want to thank Sergio's Tacos and Hot Dogs, with eight years of experience serving the Imperial, San Diego Yama Counties with Mexicali-style hot dogs and taquitas. Contact Sergio at (760) 562-0057, or look for Sergio, Tacos and Hot Dogs on Facebook. I want to thank Eric Reyes from Los Amigos de la Comunidad, empowering communities together. Finally, I want to thank David Gastelum. If you're thinking of buying or selling a home in Imperial or San Diego Counties, make sure you contact David. He's not only a Realtor, but an investor with over 20 years of experience, and he'll teach you along the way in one of the most important investments of your life. Contact David at (760) 235-9576, or look for David Gastelum on Facebook. All right, guys, we're now back to the show. So besides, you know, making sure that, you know, kids have the parades, obviously, safety, what are some other things that we'd like the city of Imperial to empower on?
So some of the parks that, we have 17 parks in the city of Imperial, and that's a lot of upkeep, right? Some are, need some loving more than others, definitely. But that is something I do want to focus on. The other aspect is business, right? I think the city of Imperial itself has a relationship with the schools in the sense that we do multi-use when we rent the, not rent, but we use the Frank Wright Gym for a lot of the summer programs. So I would like to see more expansion of summer programs, after-school programs in the city of Imperial itself. I would love a community center, right? I think that's something that's needed. A senior center. I know they are talking about building senior apartments, and so that would be nice if they have a senior rec center there as well. There's the hotel that's going to be built, right? And with that, I think Intercare wants to build a PACE facility there, which is really exciting. And then that will also be built out. Hopefully, some more businesses will be attracted to that area as well. So for me, my top ones, you know, are of course economic growth, because we need a good tax base to be able to offset some of the other costs for, right? Roads and infrastructure and everything that goes with a city itself. And then in addition to that, Parks and Recreation is really, really big. And then safety. I love that Imperial's a very safe, tight-knit community. I want it to remain that way. I talked to Imperial County Fire Department, and, you know, their wish list would be a new engine, right? And then in addition to, because Imperial is growing, maybe, I think they called it a, just like a medical truck, but, or maybe another facility or another house to be able to respond to calls in the city of Imperial.
Like a stick-up, like a small substation?
Like a little one. Yeah, you know how like Calexico and El Centro, they have their little different departments or fire departments, but this would be more like just to be able to provide medical services.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of like an urgent, urgent care kind of...
Well, not even urgent care. I think it was they wanted like a truck to be able to be able to respond quickly to medical emergencies and not have to take the whole fire engine kind of thing, which takes a little bit longer to get out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. They still have a good response time. I don't want to discourage that. But, you know, as the city grows, where they're at right now, I don't know if you're familiar, it's Brewer Road, the curve, kind of like behind the airport. So you got to go drive all the way around with the truck to get where you're going. So that's, you know, future plans I would love.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, it's, even here in Calexico, we were talking about, about that in the planning commission, where we only have one station right now, because the one on the west side...
Does it earthquake?
No, I remember what happened to it, that they had to close it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we were talking about that, because when the train comes by, you know, you're stuck on this side or that side, well, actually this side, because if you're going that side. So, yeah, I mean, safety is a huge thing.
It is. In Calexico, I mean, from working EMS, they run their own ambulance, and that's a huge thing.
And, I mean, we don't have a hospital. Our police department is kind of, you know, in need of more police officers. And, I mean, one of the biggest things, you know, when it comes to hiring more people, getting new engines is your budget, you know. It's, I don't think people really, you know, we say, "Oh, we need this, we need this," but, you know...
Where's the money going to come from?
Yeah.
Yeah. I've had a chance to look at the budgets, you know, not just, you know, looking over them, right? And then I've looked at the impact fees that they have, and the impact fees... There's people always going to be concerned, right? There's always people going to be like, "Ah, why is this going up? Why is that going up?" The same thing as, "Why is our milk and eggs going up and gas going up?" Unfortunately, that's what's happening lately. I mean, the infrastructure costs, the employees, the prevailing wages went up, right? And so all of that comes into play when we're looking at the budget. And, yeah, it's, you know, your groceries that you got for $200, you know, two years ago are not the same now, for sure. And neither is our costs of water and electricity and so forth. So unfortunately, that all kind of trickles down that way too.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've heard, you know, "Why, why is this so? Why is our impact fees this?" Or "Why is that?" I'm like, "I'm looking into it too, just like you are." But when you're paying attention and you go to these meetings and you're really looking at it, you can kind of see why now they're coming up, right? We have 17 parks. We have an impact fee for that. We need police. We need fire. There's the fees for that, the infrastructure itself, right, to keep our water going, our electricity going there. Yeah, everything costs money.
Yeah, even, even, you know, when you, when you talk about growth, you know, building new homes, you have to make sure that infrastructure...
Is there for those future homes, of course, just like you're saying. When you guys look at planning commissions, I'm sure you guys are thinking not just the interim, but the long-term as well, right? So, yeah, that's important.
Yeah, and, you know, we don't think about, you know, the electricity, you know, we just have the infrastructure to make sure that we can power, you know, 100 new homes.
Exactly.
Like you said, there's permit for 600 new homes, you know.
Yeah.
And the water, make sure that there's, you know, pipes and enough pressure, all these little things.
There's little tiny things, and it's amazing, once you start, if you're a resident, you're living there and you're happy, you know, you're not paying attention to the finite details, right? But once you want to come to this side and run for something, or you're concerned about something, then you might start looking at the cost analysis of it. What's being done? How much is this costing? How is it going to affect me in my pocketbook? There's something that was really cool that I learned today. I mean, I knew it was there, but you can actually look at your water usage. They have an app on there that, Invoice Cloud, and then something else. I have it written down. But you can actually go on the City of Imperial website, sign up, and then you can tell how much water you're using, how much... Invoice Cloud and then something else I have it written down but you can actually go on the city of Imperial website sign up and then you can tell how much water you're using how much you know to If you're worried about your water bill it's kind of amazing that we have those opportunities online to be able to look at that stuff
Yeah cuz I I mean I I don't have light at the house but I don't know if we have this in in Calexico because I mean it's a good it's a good um thing to keep an eye out you know
Yeah you can even pay your bill with like Venmo now which is cool yeah they just it's called invoice cloud I was like wow that's amazing like Venmo Cash App or I don't know if it's Cash App but like Apple Pay yeah make it more streamlined cuz again our median age is thirty-three years there you think I don't even write checks you think somebody's writing out a check no you pay your stuff online a lot of times
Yeah the other day I had to write a check I I went crazy looking for my checkbook I was like I haven't used a check like
Forever
In years
Yeah
I mean I was lucky that I still have some but I mean I have some cuz I I don't use them but
I always get counterchecks cuz I never write checks I'm terrible I mean it it just tells you like how like electronically based we are on certain things now
And you like you mentioned it in the medium age of
Thirty-three
Thirty-three that's crazy
I don't think they're out there writing checks like me I'm forty-three
Yeah
Yeah another cool thing that I learned and I think that as a candidate I can expound on that is Imperial has wifi in their parks did you know that
No
Not all of them but it's headed that way I'm like that's amazing that you have wifi in your parks our library does some awesome things and some awesome programs that I would love to see Continued and um with that growth you can rent a Chromebook you can get a hotspot from them yeah it's it's really amazing the work that they're doing I just wanna Continue it and kind of add to it right if elected
Um this is your first time running for any public office
It is a little nerve-wracking like putting yourself out there right
So what what's been your your experience on you know campaigning going out to the to events I know you've been um walking
Yeah I've been canvassing you know I get the I was surprised I don't know if it's cuz if I'm a woman I get is your husband okay with you running And I was like yeah he's okay with me running which I'm like okay you know you you get I'm excited that you're running to is your husband okay with you running to Um why are you running like what are you gonna do you know but I look at it as a positive experience I I love Going out there I love talking to people already and like I said I feel like this could be an extension of the community service that I already do just at a different level right different That I can give back to them that way but as far as the campaign goes yeah it's been fun so far I mean Everybody's playing nice I I I haven't heard anything bad um so yeah it's fun
Yeah I think e- e- even when it comes to campaigning um because we talked about you know how the the city council is kind of like the one that's the quietest from the
Mm-hmm
Valley but even when it comes to campaigning I think that you know You guys are a little bit more civil like you guys aren't you know throwing you know
No I don't think anybody's like throwing anybody over the under the bus about something no um I saw a lot of the candidates yesterday at the Ivy Regional Chamber Dinner and I think we took a picture like it wasn't like Oh no I can't talk no everybody talks to everybody cuz you're 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 residents there right God forbid I don't win I'm still gonna see the people I'm still gonna know them and they're still gonna Go to the same church and stores that I go to it's not like oh my gosh no Imperial's tight-knit
Yeah and that's um you know that's that's something that's cool about Imperial that you know you know everybody pretty much talks to everybody
Yeah
Um when it comes to to voting um I don't know Imperial's numbers what what is it you know
They're low still just like everybody else um I think we have Ten thousand registered voter it might be a uh don't quote me on it but it might be a higher number now but looking at the Voter registration things I wanna say it was more than ten thousand and still I think a lot of people vote by mail right and so those are coming out on October tenth And so if they vote it usually will be by mail and I don't think a lot of people actually come out to personally hand it in
Yeah
Yeah yeah
And um do you think that the people that do vote um do they vote uh Based on you know what you're running on like your campaign or is it
I would hope you know it's not like always a I'm sure there's popularity contests out there too but I'm hoping I'm getting my message out there enough that they would vote on the The ideas and the platform that I want to bring to the city of Imperial But yeah sometimes I'm sure it's like oh hey I know so-and-so I'm gonna vote for them yeah yeah
Yeah especially I mean it's kind of um I don't think that From the candidates that I've seen um from Imperial you know I don't think that anybody any of the candidates have like really bad ideas that you're like oh no you know
No I can't I can't yeah so I mean Yeah it's 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 interesting like I have no idea honestly cuz this is my first time how that would um come into play is it okay yeah you might know my parents but It's interesting how people vote sometimes or if they do vote I mean sometimes it is by by who you know sometimes they are listening I think a lot of people actually read the candidate statements I hope When those get published you know in the little ballot book that they give out um but yeah it's a how does Calexico do for voting
Um in terms of numbers I think we're still low really low um and I think that yeah I think it's a popularity thing Or yeah or or whoever Um does you need to do a lot of walking here
Yeah
Um because a- as it is people don't vote so if you were able to convince somebody to vote you need to go in there in person and like
Yeah actually physically mail it in or take it in yeah that's a big deal
Um and and if you're there they're obviously gonna oh well I'll vote for you cuz you came by and so I think the um yeah I think they vote based on Uh familiarity
Uh-huh
That's um but I don't think they vote in terms of and and I I think again it's kind of hard to vote on Uh campaign I think you need to know the person or kind of make sure that when you know them it's you know all this this person is um Is a a smart um somebody that's gonna make you know the right decisions it's gonna think hard about you know the the impact overall
Yeah
Um because yeah I I mean it's it's really hard to To mess you know to I don't know to campaign campaign and and say like oh no that person's gonna you know screw the city up Because obviously you're you're you become a politician and you're selling something that
Yeah
At the end of the day might not be true or may be true but um but yeah making sure that the person you're voting um you know that it There's somebody's gonna think about you know their decisions uh make the right decisions look at the impact uh overall because yeah I don't think um yeah
I mean I and other Candidates not not in Imperial I'm just saying like if you've been a politician for a while and you might have a history there people may or may not vote for you right I mean that's just The game and and it's not a game but it's just what it comes down to right like oh I don't like so-and-so because of X Y and Z or They did this or they did that but I think for Imperial for the most part the current council is awesome and that You know we don't have any crazy stories back there and I think the current the current candidates you know Um are running for the right reasons myself included that we want to make that difference especially me and and give back like I said and Make sound decisions that eventually will affect not just the residents of today but you know our future generations as well so it's important
I think for me a a huge um Uh reason why I would v- vote for a specific person is like experience and I don't mean like oh he's been a politician before or your job but just like Um living in the city you're running for um knowing your community you know who you're who you're representing Um um and 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 having an open mind to to I mean and I think it's it's based on what I'm saying right now it's based you know from what we're experiencing here in Calexico
Yeah
Um because yeah I mean Uh y- you can um focus just on one part of your community um yeah there's ways to help one one part of your community if you really want to but You need to uh picture overall and make sure that um you're representing everybody not just
A certain aspect and I think with me okay yes I've been healthcare for my whole life but I don't think that precludes me from not having a sound mind to make good decisions when it comes to financials and and reading budgets and and stuff like that I've done We had to read budgets with ARC right we had to make decisions like hey um we need a new bus like let's look at the budget or we need new this or that and so I've had a little bit of experience not a lot right this is on a whole other level in the city of Imperial but it's it's Again it's impactful and you want to choose people who have the best interest in mind for the city itself Um when I vote for somebody that's what I'm looking for right it's as much as it's Shouldn't be a popularity contest I actually do maybe I'm a nerd and I read this stuff and I read what they're about and I kind of research that person a little bit Um so I can get a feel of who they're they're gonna be right and how they're gonna help our our community and so I would hope for myself that They would look like okay well yeah she doesn't have a lot of experience in the sense of political experience but I have a lot of experience with the community giving back to my community Um you know I'm a wife and a mother and you know as a mother you you are in school with your kids and you you know how the school systems work and And y- y- you have those relationships right with our our residents and so and then now on the flip side I get to take of my older Care of my older residents too so I get to see their the needs across the board right from the little ones to our older residents and what their needs are so I think I can give back that way
And I think a a huge um you know thing that also um makes a person a a good city council member or just a a good person in general is like Accepting when you're wrong and accepting you know when you don't know something
Mm-hmm
Um being able to to learn to say like you know what I don't know you know we're talking about this I might not know everything um can you have somebody teach me
Yeah I've asked lots of questions when you're doing research on this when you When I decided to run for city council I wasn't like I'm just gonna run and see what happens oh heck no I started reading budgets I started reading the um Strategic planning I started to read the blueprint for the eighty-six plans and so when I had a question in regards to the impact fee I reached out right I I didn't know explain to me or I'm reading it this way can you clarify it for me right so you need to be transparent with that um as a city right you need to be transparent and And for myself I needed to be like when I didn't know something I'm gonna find out though before I speak on it or or preach on it or whatever
Yeah
Yeah
Yeah and and you know research and learning cuz I mean being part of the planning commission you know I've learned a lot there's a lot of things that I didn't
Yeah you guys have codes you have this you have that yeah it was like you had the by by municipal and the state and the federal and yeah
Yeah there's so many things and it comes yeah it comes to um you know building stuff or bringing in new businesses you know there's a lot of things that go behind So you know being able to also accept the 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 bureaucracy of you know being in a city council or running a city
Yeah
Um obviously you know four years might not be a long enough term to
Mm-hmm
To fulfill some of your you know
Ideas
Ideas that you want
I don't wanna say promises cuz I know promises
So yeah four years may not be a so you know accepting that you know Running for reelection might be an a a a choice but but not running for reelection and saying you know hopefully whoever comes in might continue with you know some of the Ideas that I had
You know I think the the nerd in me the research side of me would be apt to looking okay If we don't qualify for this because of our income or high median income well then can we qualify for roads uh based off of this this need or our traffic how much traffic we have per day Can we qualify for small business loans for people or or get them in touch with that because they're trying to build that small business our veterans whatever Resources are out there that's what I want to go after and look at so Nobody's not given that opportunity to build or have nice streets right or nice parks even so if it looks Like we gotta go after grants well let's go after grants right it's not just the city budget alone you gotta think outside the box when it comes to to finding money
Mm-hmm
Yeah
Um so we're at forty-five minutes more or less and you know that's what I you know I've been trying to to give candidates but Um uh one question that I I've I've been asking the candidates that Gina said Gina said that um it stuck with her when I asked her this question was um Say you don't win um you know What then are you still gonna be involved with the city um be in touch with the city council because I feel that you know when I ask this question is because Sometimes I feel that we have good candidates and they lose and then you know you don't you don't see
Right off into the sunset you don't see him no you know somebody asked me that the other day they're like well what if you don't win I'm like Then I don't win I'm still gonna do what I'm doing um and not in a bad way you know we all hope to win but I'm still gonna do community service I'm still gonna be out there with my kids and my Grandbaby and and I'm still gonna be doing church stuff I'm still out there I don't see myself going off and and not giving back right you just find ways if you want to If you choose to you figure out a way how you can give back and and um Be of service to your community and and to the county in whole right so it's not like oh my gosh I'm gonna lose I'm gonna go run out no I'm still gonna be out there I'm still gonna be doing my thing and you'll still see me and maybe behind the scenes but I'll still be with Mona I'll still be with ARC if they allow me right I'm still gonna be doing the things that I'm doing Rotary so yeah it's again like I feel like it's an extension of the of the service I can give now If I'm elected a city council so if I don't that's okay I'll still be out there
So um any closing thoughts anything that I didn't ask you that you would like to talk about
I have three dogs no No um and we have a great uh park in Imperial for for dogs no I'm just I'm really Grateful for the opportunity to be able to run for city council right something you have to think about you something you have to pray about and you gotta get that family support and friend support and I've been blessed with a a an amazing family and friends who are very supportive and
I want to ask you is your husband okay with you running
Yeah he at first he's like he's all what the hell are you gonna do I go I run for city council he's like ay ay I'm like yeah another thing but no he's good with me running um
No no I just meant it cuz you were asked that
No he's yeah he's getting used to the idea I'm already already busy so I think he goes you're gonna be busier I'm like yeah but that's okay you're just gonna come with me he's like okay Yeah
I'll bring you along
Yeah yeah no it's it's good everybody needs to give back so he can give back too
Yeah So and and I interrupted you but any you know you were
No I'm I'm again I'm just you know really blessed by my family to be able to run and so with that I I do have that support and I'm I'm grateful for that and So I I look forward to hearing from the the residents and see if I get elected on November eighth
Um where can people follow your campaign
So I'm on Facebook Ida for Imperial Instagram Ida for Imperial I think everybody has my phone number it's out there too won't post it right here but it's out there so yeah if you need to get ahold of me and then I'm gonna have a mixer on October thirteenth at Humble Farmer at five thirty
Okay
So they can uh meet and greet and good stuff ask me questions and I can get to know them too
Awesome awesome yeah and I'll put um a link to your Facebook and Instagram
Thank you I appreciate that
On the show notes um but um I want to ask you what kind of dogs you have
Oh we have a pug his name is you you know author is Edgar Allan Pug like Edgar Allan Poe my daughter named him we have a German short-haired pointer his name is Otto and then we have a Frenchy named Remy Who was a pain in the butt at three AM and woke me up but yeah yeah it's they're good they're like other children
Yeah oh yeah for sure we have a we have a beagle she's ten years old
Oh
So she's getting these I don't know she's been kind of weird and I think it's her age
Yeah
Where she doesn't like to She wants to go to bed whenever she wants to
Like they they become old seniors like my pug he's like don't mess with me lady I'm gonna go lay down right here and that's it yeah
And like like sometimes like she'll she'll just I'm watching TV and she'll sit in front of me like just watch me like I'm like do you wanna go outside and she's like just watching do you want your hungry so it's like yeah she's getting
Yeah
Yeah my wife thinks there's something like she's like we need to take her to the vet I'm like she's just getting old
She's getting old
Yeah
Oh no my dogs complain if something's wrong with them I know I'm like alright that's we're going to the mix or we're going to you or we're going to Imperial the vet whoever's open
Yeah yeah for sure yeah like you said there's they're like another little kid
They are
Yeah
Aside from our other kids
Yeah for sure
Yeah
Well Ida thank you again for coming down and and
Appreciate it
And you know sharing with us you know campaign and just talking in general
Yeah
I think that's my my goal is
It's good format it doesn't feel as uh formal like yeah
I think it's you get to know a person instead of having like you know set questions like oh you know what's your what's your um your platform you know All these technical questions aren't you know just having a conversation is a I feel is a better way to get to know you know you as a candidate and you as a person but Thank you again for coming down um again thank you Calexico Brewing Company uh shout out to Jamie Shoe and Shoes from the heart Um alright guys well thank you so much for listening or watching and we'll see you guys in the next one peace